And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. To those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivi- liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Here.
Counselor Selly?
Here.
Counselor Powers?
Here.
Counselor Scamperly?
Here.
Counselor Stevenson?
Here.
Counselor Trim?
Here.
Counselor Weaver?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. And we welcome Mr. Fonda Cronus, who is first city council meeting tonight as our city manager. Fonda just started work with us last Monday, and we certainly wish him well. We have one presentation tonight from Director of Planning and Development Andrea Smith regarding the CDBG vacant property clearance program grant.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we will have a public hearing on the CDBG vacant property clearance program, which we talked a little bit about at the last council meeting. This is a program that provides CDBG funds for the purpose of clearance and demolition of blighted commercial and mixed-use structures, as well as blighted residential, vacant residential properties. The funding is intended to provide assistance for demolition only, as which also includes environmental site assessments as appropriate to deliver demolition, site work if it's related to the demolition or clearance activity, soft costs, including architectural and engineering fees, as well as legal fees, and environmental mitigation, which is lead-based paint compliance, asbestos compliance, air quality monitoring, et cetera. This is intended for demolition purposes only, and the period in which the compliance with the CDBG requirements is five years. I think this was one of the questions that was asked last time. The intention of this program is to assist with clearance activities where the end use will be vacant property, or where there are no specific plans for reuse. Pursuant to Section 24 CFR 570.505, property that has been acquired or improved, which means demolition in this instance, in whole or in part using these CDBG funds may not have a change in use of such property for a period of five years after the closeout of the grant. A change in use is anything other than simply vacant property. So this is really intended to provide local governments or partners of local governments, including landbanks, with funding specifically to address the removal of slums and blight through demolition only. So I just wanted to give a little bit of that overview before entertaining questions from or comments from the public at tonight's public hearing. But I also just wanted to say that our inventory of properties in need of demolition is quite small. We really don't have any city-owned properties that are in need of demolition at this time. And so that makes potential application a little bit challenging. Other communities, so this, I should say, this particular grant application does have a rolling deadline, so the deadline is not July 31st or August 16th, which we've talked about for other grants that we are presently working on. These funds are being made available until they run out or until the end of the year, so they will continue to be available. Other communities seem to be using this at the county level, so the county is the primary applicant, and then funding can be provided to municipalities as municipalities have a need for demolition funding. I don't know what the county's plans are, if they do intend to apply for this type of funding or not. But right now, we don't have property that we would have an immediate need to use this type of funding on. But happy to listen to any public comment. It can be used for privately-owned properties, as well as properties owned by entities, again, like the land bank or other qualifying not-for-profits. But again, the sole purpose of the demolition is to create vacant land, not to promote redevelopment or reuse. So that is my highlights in advance of the public hearing this evening.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions or comments from council?
I have one question, if I may. So why would we apply for this grant? What is the purpose of us applying, spending time to apply for this grant?
I'm not sure that us applying for this grant is the best thing for us to do. It's simply new funding. This is the first time this funding has been made available, so I wanted to bring it to council's attention and to the attention of the public. Certainly, if there's a project out there that somebody needs assistance with demolition on, great opportunity to inform us of it, so that we can determine whether it's a, whether or not it's a good fit for this program, and, you know, apply on behalf of that particular private entity and/or not-for-profit. But for us, for the city of Augsburg, this moment in time, it's a very unique moment in time. We don't have a plethora of properties in need of demolition, but that is the position that we find ourselves in at this moment. Thank you.
Andrea, do we have any properties that we're looking to, would be looking to demolition that we don't want to rebuild within five years? That would be my concern.
The city does not own property that we would look to demolish and maintain as vacant property for any period of time.
Why, why would we want to assist somebody else in demolishing something that's going to sit vacant for five years?
Well, if we had a property that was a danger to public health and safety, maybe the property owner says to us, hey, there's no way I'm going to be able to, I'm going to lose this property for taxes. I know it's, you know, there was a recent fire, maybe we've had some of those properties in the past. We kind of saw it on the horizon. We thought we might become the owners of it in a short period of time. Or if we were looking at acquiring properties through the 19, Article 19A, which we have done before, that's how the city acquired 801 Caroline Street, for example, which was through a code enforcement action. We just don't have any of those at this moment that are close enough where we could, and because we're not foreclosing any longer, this may not be a good fit for us at this time. But it does provide funding for demolition, which historically has been very difficult to obtain. But we've been fortunate to have tackled some of our biggest challenges, most recently with the demolition of the cheese plant, and prior to that, 212 Ford Street. The land bank has taken on a lot of the burden of demolitions of the residential structure, so not to say there aren't properties in need of demolition, or that we won't have those properties that come up, but right now, we don't have, we don't have them in the queue.
Thank you. How, how, sorry, Donna, go ahead.
So it's kind of similar to a storm test, like why, it has to be left vacant for five years.
I mean, that's, that is a requirement of the, of this particular program. It's intended to provide municipalities with funding for demolition in an effort to remove slums and blight. Slums and blight is one of the CDBG national objectives, removal of slums and blight. There are other programs out there at the state level that are available, Restore New York being one of them, that are intended for demolition with the intent of redevelopment. This is just not one of those.
But so can we, like, contact private owners that we know, whose properties we know are in good nature to the public, thinking of one in particular? Is that one something we could do, like, contact private owners, see if they're available?
Yeah, we are the, they cannot apply, so the city has to be the applicant. But if, but yes, if, that's really the intent of the public hearing, which is a requirement of the application process as well. So if there are individuals that may have a property project, et cetera, that they, it would be appropriate for them to discuss it tonight, and then for us to then be able to kind of take that into consideration and determine what we want to do going forward.
So private owner of a house or dwelling, I hear people comment, you know, I'd like to tear it down, it costs a lot of money, just the whole asbestos evaluation, or whatever it's called, I'm sure there's a name in.
Abatement.
Abatement, but they have to come, they do an assessment, right? Asbestos assessment, and it's just, it's quite often cost prohibitive. The CDBG grant, it's, you know, it says it's, the principal purpose is to benefit low and moderate income persons. And so it would seem to me that if somebody is in this situation, and they want a house turned, torn down, or building, or whatever, and a property that could be deemed condemned or whatever, and unhealthy, they would come to the city, and the city would apply for this grant on their behalf, or work with that person, and get funds somehow?
Yeah, I mean, private property is, is stated in the request for applications as being eligible on a case-by-case basis. It's certainly a little bit less clear, and not something that we have done a lot of. I mean, the intent is for, so it really is to go in and do demolition where there are unsafe structures that present a potential hazard in a neighborhood, or, or you define an area that has at least 25% of the area is, meets that slums and blight criteria as established by the, by the federal government, and then you can do demolition within that area. But it, I don't, it isn't intended to, to sort of supplement private property owners and do demolition on behalf of private property owners. That's not what this is for. This is specifically to remove hazards in neighborhoods and create vacant property in an effort to assist low and moderate income individuals. It's a, it's a brand-new program. You know, I'm sure that next year, there'll be some tweaks and changes to it. In years past, we would have, I mean, I would have fallen head over heels for this program, but we don't have that inventory of property any longer, and working with the private sector, especially someone who does not meet the low-to-moderate income threshold, is going to be challenging. Site control has to be very clear when it isn't, when the property isn't owned by the local government or a land bank.
Yeah, and I'm just very confused by it, because the purpose is to benefit low and moderate income persons, but low and moderate income persons, you're telling me can't apply?
Well, the city of Augsburg or county have to be the applicant for all CDBG funds.
On their behalf.
Then that property is listed in the application along with the intended project, which would be the demolition. But you would, I mean, that, if we had a handful of people that wanted to do that, especially if they were in close proximity, maybe that's a good application.
Yeah. I think there's a lot of people that would take advantage of that, in the city itself.
It's got quite a bit of restriction to it, unfortunately, but with, with that being said, and I apologize if you already said this, if we're to get some funding for that, how long can we sit on that fund? Is there a timeframe in which it needs to be?
The properties have to be identified in the application.
So the properties have to be identified. So just off the top of my head, I'm thinking of a couple of places here that are boarded up. I don't, I do not know the property owners, you know. So with that being said, working in conjunction with the land bank, I think, from everything you're telling me, it would either be through the county level or through the city level, working with a potential land bank. If we're to dilapidated property, remove one, say, on Champlain Street, there's, there's a big lot on the corner of Champlain Street. The house has been vacant for, I don't know how long. And with that being said, with no development on it, or new build, would it possibly enhance the potential for the adjoining property owners to purchase it, but it would have to be five years?
So, I mean, I think maybe to illustrate the concept that I think the state is looking to do, is if, if you're partnering with, instead of all of these things that are pretty hypothetical, this is also hypothetical, but if you're working with a land bank, for example, since we have a land bank, and I'm fairly familiar with what they do, much of their funding, although not all of their funding, is restricted to assisting low-to-moderate income individuals. So if the city of Augsburg obtained this funding for demolition and acquired that property at the corner of Champlain and whatever that street is, did the demolition, and then the land bank came in, took ownership of that, put a project there, but sold it to an individual that was low to moderate income, that would be a suitable type of a project. You just have to go through the change of views, but it would meet the national objective of assisting low-to-moderate income individuals. Knocking it down and selling it to the next-door neighbor just to have a larger yard?
Not much.
I'm not sure that that's exactly what they're looking to accomplish.
Thank you, Andrea.
Andrea, could it also be used, say, a landlord owns a three, four-unit building, low to moderate income, they prove that it's low to moderate income housing, and the building next door is really dilapidated, that can be taken down, could that landlord then possibly participate in the program so that they add green space for the low-to-moderate income tenants, something like that, so it makes more green space in our areas that are blighted?
Yeah, and it would be improving the neighborhood in that instance. So that's another, that's a good example as well, where you're just looking to take it down, not resell it, not do a new construction project of any type, but remove the hazard, remove the public, public health threat, maybe, and then by default, benefit the residents of the low-to-moderate income housing development.
That's where I see the most benefit for some of the neighborhoods, because we have some apartment houses that have terrible buildings next to them that should come down, but there are children, there are people that would enjoy open green space and don't have it, and that would be ideal, instead of having, you know, people sitting on sidewalks, and kids having to put their pools between the street and the road.
Okay. Should we hold, like, a special public hearing where we can advertise this program?
That's what tonight is for. Yeah, I mean, basically, people from, from this point forward, right? We're going to apply for this, and I support it. They would just come and see you and see where it goes, right? I mean, sign up their, their property, or? But I guess I want to clarify a statement that I believe was made. If a property owner has interest in approaching the city about a possible grant application, must they give notice at the public hearing tonight to do so?
The public.
Or can they pick up the phone tomorrow, or next week, or?
The public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to say, hey, we think this is great, hey, I have a project, I really don't think we should be doing this at all, this isn't where the city should be putting their funding. It's, it's an opportunity to express general comment.
Thank you.
If you have a project, you don't have to speak about it tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else at council? Okay, Andrea, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
And we have one public hearing tonight regarding the city's proposed community development block grant vacant property clearance program grant application. And I will open that public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes to speak. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please use the raised hand feature in the upper-right-hand corner of your screen, and you will have five minutes to speak.
The first individual is registered as Wendy Hamilton, and I will unmute that individual now. Appears you are self-muted.
Good evening and welcome, Fonda, to Augsburg. I have just a couple of comments about the grant. I'm wondering if there's any matching money that would be required from the city, or if there would be any costs that might be unforeseen, that the city might be responsible for. Also, I think I understood that this is on a, sort of a rolling application basis, or quarterly basis, that there's no specific deadline, so I'm wondering if it wouldn't be worthwhile, you know, reaching out to the county and the land bank to see if there's, you know, some of the property, especially at the county level, maybe they own some of this blighted property now, and just see and coordinate our efforts there. I liked Jen's, you know, proposal of what a, you know, a project, a good project would look like, but who then pays for the sod and, you know, for that greening of that space? Because what I'm hearing is, this money would take it down, take it away, but that's it, and then it would sit like that for five years. So those are just some things that came to the top of my mind. I'm happy that we, we don't always jump on every single grant that comes our way.
Thank you, Wendy. It's all objection from council. I'd like to invite Andrea to perhaps answer for us, as well as the public, that question about any local exposure for expense in participating or helping possible applicants in this program.
CDBG funds do not have a required match, like many of the grants that I speak to council about, that have a 20% match or a 50% match. This does not have a match requirement, but I think maybe more importantly to Ms. Hamilton's comment, is there a cost to the city? There's a cost to the city in that we are responsible for administering it, can, doing the monitoring of it for five years post-grant closeout. So there is a cost to doing that, but there is no set match requirement.
Thank you for answering, Mayor.
Sure.
Your Honor, what about the part about, you know, sodding, seeding, the lawn space, would that be included, or could be included in the grant process?
Typically, demolition costs, site restoration is an eligible expense, so not, probably not sod, but, you know, make, seeding it, grading it.
Yeah, presentable.
Is, is.
Would be on, would be on city.
Would be a, an eligible grant expense.
Right. So it would be a cost to us outside of the grant?
No.
No.
No, okay.
I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure. You never know.
Yep.
Again, thank you. I think she was just clarifying that sodding, so, but seeding, yeah, so. Okay. Kathy?
I do not see any other hands raised.
So with that, I declare this public hearing closed. Brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, and you will have five minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised.
That brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence that I can?
We do not.
Thank you. Moves us to consent agenda. There's a claims as enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 13-2024, in the amount of $607,701.91, and Library Warrant Number 13-2024, in the amount of $0, and Capital Fund Warrant Number 13-2024, in the amount of $859,602.35, and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 13-2024, in the amount of $0, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 13-2024, in the amount of $0, as audited be, and the same hereby our order paid, I so move.
Second.
Questions? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution calling for public notice and public hearing on a proposed ordinance to license municipal property at the Dubisky Visitor Center to the Dirty Gringo.
Can I move that? Second. Would you just briefly describe the resolution, Andrea, please?
So back in the spring, we did a similar resolution, we, following the request for proposals from concessioners, we did receive two, one from Hole in the Wall, one from the Dirty Gringo. We were working with Hole in the Wall, who was awarded the license agreement at the May 13th meeting, but due to a series of events, they're unable to comply with the timelines and get started, so this would move the same process forward to the other entity that had submitted a proposal, to that request for proposals, which was Dirty Gringo. So we would accept comments on this at the next meeting via public hearing, and if, if it is the desire of council to move forward, there will be a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a license with Dirty Gringo for that space in the Dubisky Visitor Center.
Thank you for that explanation. Any questions or comments from council?
Just, just one, Andrea, related to, prior to the resolution, what, what, can we find out prior to this action, what commercial space square foot goes for?
Sure. Average, I'm assuming you mean average, general.
Just a roundabout, kind of. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Kathy, please call the roll.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by city manager Fonda Cronus.
A resolution call for a special meet, a special city council meeting on Monday, July 15, 2024, at 6:00 PM, City Hall, City Council Chambers, Augsburg, New York.
I'll move that.
Second.
Questions or comments? Again, the purpose of this special meeting will be to have staff and, and our engineers make a presentation to us and to the community with regards to challenges experienced by the city sewer system during major storm events. We'd originally hoped to have a presentation this evening, but because some of the information that will be relevant to the discussion isn't available until the 10th of the month, that prohibited us from proceeding forward, and quite honestly, allowing for a special meeting to deal exclusively with the subject, I think, is something that would be a good use of council's time, as well as our community's time. So that's, that's the reason I've asked for the special meeting next Monday. Questions? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Selly?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business this evening? I just wanted to briefly ask, I know that we discussed potentially the city adjusting its, its contribution towards the check valves in the, in the sewer lines of problem areas and things like that. Couple of questions. One, has the city advanced on that? And number two, is there a potential to include some of these check valves, systems, in some of the upcoming grants that we have, and possibly even the recent mall grant renovation?
So I guess I'll take that one.
Okay.
I'll at least answer the first one for you. We haven't made any advancements as far as the policy is concerned on reimbursement. I think we were waiting to get the information back from, from EDR and folks, and then really, once we have a better picture of what's going on, see what our remedies are. So, so we're certainly going to be waiting for that report.
Okay. And what was the second part of my question?
Grants.
The granting. Now, I don't think we've had any specific conversations, but I think it's top of mind for everybody to be looking at opportunities to be able to support our residents as much as possible.
Okay, good, thank you. And the other old business? Brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business this evening?
Your Honor, I've had a number of complaints from citizens about quality of life issues within the city, cars that are unlicensed, garbage piling up, things along that nature. And I just wanted to make sure that I brought to the rest of council's attention, I will be sending an email to the city manager, and I'll see the rest of council with some specific addresses that some neighbors are having particular issues with. They've reached out, but they haven't gotten much result with it, and so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that those things are being talked about. And so just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that those things are being talked about and being complained about.
Thank you for mentioning that, Jen. Yes, I received a couple of emails along the way, the past few weeks, that I have for the staff to look into, so.
Thank you.
That can be included in response back to us. And the other new business? That brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion this evening?
Mayor, I would just like to take the opportunity to welcome Fonda. I apologize for not being there, but I'm looking forward to being in the talking hood when I get back.
Thank you, Storm. I do have a couple that are related to a degree. Just reminded to our community, Seaway Festival begins Saturday, July twentieth, it runs through Sunday, July twenty-eighth. So we hope our citizens, neighbors and our visitors from around the area will take advantage of the many events scheduled through the hard work of the Seaway Festival Committee. We're certainly looking forward to, to an exciting Seaway Festival in twenty-two-four. And again, related to that, of special note, on July twentieth and twenty-first, the La Cee's reenactment will take place at Fort de la Presentacion. Activity on Saturday includes Fort Fest and Artisan Vendor Fair. Gates open at ten A M. Saturday, and I encourage the public to attend these reenactments. And that brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have two minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
And we do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.